Alright, so we'll call it the order, call meeting order at six thirty one of the emergency service and building committees. Um, just for note, Chief Snyder and President Knight are both at work still.
Alright.
Just got confirmation from them. And they got a text, the link on the Wellington calendar is neither clickable nor copyable.
Yeah, right. I just found that out. I talked to Shannon today and we're gonna come up with a different plan.
So we have to just manually.
Well, when I, I had a conversation with her this afternoon. I suggested just put the meeting ID and the passcode along with the link in on the agenda.
Yes.
This requires too many click throughs and.
Yeah, or we can also just, well, this is not as a word document, so we, who's gonna remember, who cares?
No, the problem is copied gets pushed out to the public is a photocopy that Ron, that Robin makes. Which kills any links.
It's right, it's now those blue writing.
It's just a picture now.
Yes.
Okay.
We went through this with school building committee and I had them stop doing it that way. Instead of doing the copy and of the print, I had them keep it all electronic and put it out.
You would think they would do that.
Because you can make, you can make PDFs keep the link live.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that's what needs to be done, so the people just click it and go.
The problem is, Robin receives it for the record, she's gonna wear stamp.
She gives it to Ivan to do it, he breaks it out, he doesn't.
Yes, but that's gotta be on there, so, and then that's copied into the.
Right, alright, because putting a stamp on it's manual.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, then you make a photocopy of that, and that's what goes in record. And that's what gets pushed out.
So, there should be an electronic stamp for the version that gets put online.
Okay.
The manual stamp could be for the one for the record here, but the electronic one goes online, you can use an electronic stamp.
Alright.
Yeah, but is the copier set up to just send that PDF to Robin for the record?
I mean, they do it down here, or if that's.
It can, it can be made to work.
That might come out all day long, we've been having links, we would sue them here, but you know, we had, we had links, we had, so that's not new technology.
Okay.
Meeting ID and passcode.
Meeting ID and passcode.
That's really all you need.
Yep. Yeah, let me write that down. But I won't remember. Alright, uh, you know, we're not really taking minutes, but I.
We was working.
It's all, well, it's all, it's all video, it's all recorded. Do we really have to take break minutes when the entire meeting is recorded?
That's good, a meeting has to happen.
Alright. More comment.
They can be very simple, if, if the time is not there for detailed minutes. The legal requirement is that you document what voting members were in attendance.
Okay.
And you document the actions taken, including who voted for what.
Alright.
That's the bare minimum requirement.
Okay.
Obviously, we all want more than that, because understanding the conversation is valuable when you look back historically. But if you're just gonna try to meet the legal requirement.
Okay.
Who was here, what topics were discussed, where actions were taken on what topics, and who voted what way.
Okay.
And who was here?
I know, yes, yes.
I said that the first time.
A little sloppy with that.
This we have, I have. No, we, no, we, it's the collective, come on.
Thank God, we got him on video.
Yes, exactly. President speak, I don't see anybody here. Okay, new business, three bids for accessory dwelling unit, and the, uh, just a little before we. Uh, I did present the monies that we had talked about last time to the board of selectmen, just as a, because we're gonna be asking for seventy five. One thousand, one thousand, which is what I sent for. Seventy five thousand for the eight accessory dwelling unit, uh, thousand for studies we decided to, and a thousand for the cold. And they thought that was fine. What I'd like to do for now is, can we, I think we should just get three bids for an accessory dwelling unit from whatever company. You mentioned Champion Homes, you have a line, Mike on one, and then.
We got, we finally got someone else to respond and they emailed both of us.
Okay, great, so.
Did you check out the link?
That's the one you were talking about also.
So, do we have, do we have?
He had reached out to them already, they weren't answering him, I reached out to them, then all of a sudden they answered both of us.
But do we have two, or? So we technically have two, that's fine. I'll just say we couldn't, we reached out to others and no one responded, so we have two.
I haven't even looked at that one yet.
That's fine.
So, I have a couple of concerns with it, one, it's a leasing price, it's only the leasing price, I did ask them to give us a price of purchase. Um, it was twelve seven, something like that, to lease it for three months.
Okay.
So, um. It was, it was pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Seven of the three months.
Yeah.
I have it.
Yes, I told them, I told them it's a minimum of three years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I figured it quickly, it's gonna be thirty thousand dollars a year.
So, and it was.
Well, that comes out.
That's right, well, maybe it's about to say, I think the ones that.
But it's still worth, like, plus hookups, plus everything, plus everything, so it's.
So it's, that's more expensive.
The one that, this does say about wood furniture, bed, you know, beds.
Yeah.
I have, just kidding.
Yeah, email it yesterday, but I haven't had time to.
Alright, so if we have two, that's fine. Um, next Thursday is the next, uh, uh, board of finance meeting, and I just wanna go there and kinda. Do the same thing I did with the board of selectmen, say, here's what I'm going to be asking for at your next meeting. We have two bids, we're trying to get a third, but we're not getting any responses, what, what do I have to do to get it right the first time? That's kind of, and I, and in the past, most, they usually guide me and say, here's what you gotta do. If you wanna get it, it doesn't mean that they say yes, and I understand that, but the presentation should be solid and.
We, we did towns move forward, we're just wanting to bid in the past.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, when it's a, when it's something that's difficult to get three bids for, you sometimes have no choice.
Yeah.
Particularly if you try to get the bids.
Yes, it's a good favor times.
The, um, the other thing is, I finally got the guy to answer about the setup. Uh, the, the price that we didn't have, and we just kinda did a wing in.
Yeah.
On the price.
The local contractor, whatever.
The local contractor, and he said. To meet the, uh, to use something three to five years, it's not the same setup as if they came in when your house burned. But because they can get away with a very sort of temporary installation when your house burns, because it's gonna be there a few months.
Right.
Or a year. But there's no way to get away with that when you're setting up for three to five years.
Okay.
So, you have to do what is comparable to a foundation, because you need not only bearing support, you need uplift restriction. To keep it from being sucked away in the next hurricane.
Makes sense.
Because they're, they are attracted to mobile homes. So, uh, the least complicated, least expensive way to do that is drive helical piles. Put a bunch of screw, big screws in the ground that the trailer is rested on.
Makes sense.
And then you attach the trailer to the helical screw, helical foundation. And so the guy said, I'm just gonna give you a wing in price, so I know that I don't come out too low. And he says, figure on it's gonna be at least twenty grand.
Okay.
For the hookup, so, that seventy five, we were a little low, we need to probably figure eighty five or ninety.
Okay.
Again, we don't have an exact quote, that's a, that's order of magnitude price.
That's right.
Which means we probably, if we decide to move forward with making official requests, we, what is, did we get back the other price yet?
Not, not to purchase, he was, what I did get, so I opened it up, it's, uh, it would be twelve six forty, uh, so twelve thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, excluding skirting due to delivery, it's seven thousand five hundred and ninety for a three month rent. So that twelve six forty was setting the trailer up the first three months and no skirting.
No skirting.
Right, yeah, this other guy was complete skirting with insulation, so that you don't breathe your pipes in the winter, it was a four season setup, yeah.
We want, okay, yeah.
So at least we.
So I think at order of magnitude, we need to figure a hundred thousand dollars.
Oops, a hundred thousand dollars.
And that, so his did not include the connection for water, so.
And this guy did include all those sets.
And that, and that would be outright purchase.
So purchase and.
Three to five years, we could sell this, probably.
Correct.
For a.
Significant discount, but at least you're getting something back, right?
Probably at least half, because, and then, then not half of a hundred, but half of the purchase price, so, yeah.
Oh, maybe one of those, a portable class rack as an, um.
Right.
Or, or a leasing.
Right, and really, considering it's used, I would call that fairly light use, it's not like you have dogs and, you know, and all that other stuff in there, you've got just, you know. It's only firefighters, what could this fire? There, the easiest people on the planet.
What can it go back to?
Anyway, okay, good, so, uh, I will, uh, talk to them next, their next meeting is next Thursday, and I will. Talk about what we just talked about, and then say, okay, we're gonna do a formal, what do I need to do to make it more formal? All I've ever done is done budgets with them, I've never asked them for one thing.
Yeah, I'm sure the answer will be, uh, um, I mean, they may say, we want you to put out an RFP and see if you get any other responses.
Then that's fine.
In which case, we just take basically what we already scratched out as what we wanted.
Yeah.
That we sent out, and then we just put it out there and say, please, give it the price by this day.
Right, right.
And we're gonna get these same two probably, they seem to be the only two we've been able to find who will answer.
Okay, that's good, and, uh. Yeah, and then, I don't know, I suppose, does the, does the request come from, with this committee, or would it come from the board of selectmen?
The requi, the recommendation goes from this committee to the board of selectmen, because where there's some committee.
Right, and the request for the money would actually come from the board of selectmen.
Correct.
Or they didn't, the board of selectmen didn't seem to have a problem, so.
Yes, and you're our conduit to the board of selectmen.
So in bureaucratic fashion, we take action on it, send it to the board of selectmen, they take action on it, send it to the board of finance, they take action. The board of finance then sends it back to the selectmen to call a town meeting, so the people can take action on it.
Excellent.
We should be through that.
Yeah, by September.
Yeah. That money is in CIP, under what, do you know what fund, was it capital reserve? Uh, I don't know what.
I think there's a line item for this.
Wasn't there a specific line item for that?
There, there is a specific line item, I don't know which fund it's sitting in.
We had this conversation the other night, depends on what fund it's sitting in.
Changes what the process, yes, so. But that would be, that would be resolved when you go to board of finance at their next meeting and say. Here's what we're planning on doing, what do you need from me?
Yeah.
Hopefully, you all have the chance to debate the process again.
We will.
Right?
I'm just writing in what bucket is the money, I don't know.
Alright, well, that's good, so, I think it's a zero four.
And because it's in, because it's in CIP, I think it's gonna follow the same process anyway, because, because it's in CIP, it has to go.
Yeah.
It has to follow that step, the board of selectmen become the requester, board of finance then says, okay, we're gonna ask the board of selectmen to call a town meeting, the town meeting would cover. All of that, because it's already in the approved plan, so you only have to now approve the allocation.
Allocation.
Of the vendor allocation.
Right, alright, so along those lines, what I would like to do is, I won't do it for the next Thursday meeting, but I wanna sort of get a feel for how that goes. But what I'd like to do is go down to station thirteen, take some photos of what it looks like, and I would like to get those, I will get those blown up. I don't wanna do handouts, I like it when people are looking up, and we're all looking at the exact same thing, and then I will present that to the board of finance, see how that flies. And then I do the same thing at the town meeting, so the town knows what, not just saying, yeah, this is what we wanna do, no, this is what we wanna do, this is why.
Yeah.
And I think that would help, um, just add to the whole, you know, the spirit of. Communication, just let people know what the hell's going on, in a way that makes sense, and if you just do a handout, everybody's looking at a different page, and they're reading something, or. But if you're there physically with big pictures saying, this is what happened, and this is the remediation that we've come up with, that's the best scenario. As, yeah, I think that will go a long way to getting to yes, so. Do I have to contact you to, for, yeah, to?
Whatever you wanna get in.
Okay, fine, I'll just pick some day when.
Yep.
I'm available.
Do you have any free pictures of the, uh, mobile?
Yeah, like while, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, before, you know, before you hit the download.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea, you're right, were there any for the, from the remediation the first time?
Yeah.
Do you have those digitally?
Absolutely.
Oh, well, I don't have to take them. If you could find the, the, the best of the best.
The worst.
And the best of the worst, and just, just send them to me digitally, and I'll get them blown up, I'd like to have them, like, set up on easels or something, so everybody can look, and then I can say, this is what, you know. Really make a presentation that, that people can get on.
I think it would be good, though, to have pictures of the current state.
Yes. Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely, cool, alright, yeah.
Um, and just as full disclosure, one of the things when we started talking with, especially the PSAP of this happening, uh, one of their concerns is making sure that we do an air study. In that building before they start putting their gear back in there, and they're just, they have some concerns.
Even to store the gear, because we were talking about, like, okay, if we got, like, a mobile home, they could still store, like, their bunker gear in there or whatever.
So that's what we, that's what our plan originally is, um, they have some concerns, especially seeing that the ambulance sits in that bay for two days, it has to sit outside half the day to air it.
Cause it smells like musty.
It's mo, it's the musty, yeah.
Even that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Really, it's wet.
How much, how much does something like that cost?
No, we can handle it within our budget, but it's just something that's gotta be done, it is.
So, I would think we should do that sooner than later, because if you end up with.
So, my plan is doing it.
If you end up with a labor problem, and I'm not saying that, you know, I respect that.
Right.
I'm not saying that in a negative way, but if you end up with a labor, a conflict with labor, and all of a sudden, we're asking to spend a hundred thousand dollars to put a trailer there, and your people aren't gonna go there.
Yeah.
Because they say we can't put a vehicle in that building. We need to make sure, we need to pivot, we need to pivot.
I think that's, that's, this came up to me yesterday, that's why I'm.
Is it, is it still because there's water coming in, or because it's just the humidity, is there everything?
Cause like not climate controlled, and like.
Right.
My basement smells like a humidifier, you know, like, is it more like a, lack of active climate control?
Lack, I think it's a little bit of everything.
It's a hundred percent humidity right now, you know?
Yeah, right.
I think there's a lot of, it's just.
Right.
I'm concerned that was brought up, so I have to.
No, 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 careful, sorry, what I'm saying is, you gotta make, the building's gotta be made, uh, livable.
Right.
Basically, I mean.
My fear is, if we do an air study, it comes back with something, what is, you know.
Well, well, I might, I might have a great point, no one's gonna use it.
We, we have to pivot, we have to do something else.
Well, then I think.
I don't know what store the other ones at.
Right, well. Well, at that point, then there's gonna have to be a discussion about where is the next logical place to put your staff, and can we fit a trailer there?
Right.
You know, can we fit a trailer down in South Wellington in front of that station on the ramp maybe, and block one bay? Can we fit a trailer on the grass behind you?
The building, not on the grass in the back of the building.
Right, that might be.
If I do it that way, it's.
Some pipe.
Septic system down there, too.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, well, you'd be close enough to get the pipe in, right?
I don't know about your, really, screw pile stuff.
Yeah, right, you know, that would take some, yeah, so.
Good to be careful where the screws.
But I, this all transpired last night, so, and this morning, that's why I.
No, that's a good point.
Wanted to make sure.
Were there any other concerns of that, I mean, like?
Really, that's it, is there? So we did have a couple of.
Any of it back, or?
They, they wanna be back together, that is number one, is surprisingly, um, as far as they, um, they wanna be back together.
That's because they've been apart long enough.
No, because it's, logistically, it's a nightmare responding to calls.
Yeah.
It is a logistical nightmare.
Of course.
One's getting to a scene before the other, it's. Opening a lot of kids.
Well, this is what Mansfield went through when they pulled the person out of station two oh seven, because having someone responding singly had a lot of challenges. Has a lot of challenges, so it's, they, they're excited about that part, and they really have no problem going back to the main station. The fear is, is of, because some of them did have some health issues. When all of this transpired in that building, so I think some of them are a little, but.
You know, I, I can imagine.
Absolutely, it's possible, I mean, that's the whole reason we're.
Absolutely, right.
Right.
I absolutely understand their concerns and.
Okay, so you're gonna, so you're gonna pursue the air studies, so we know what's going on there.
Yeah, I just, I had to wait to see real.
Yeah, I mean, that's critical, we don't wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars and then find that we have a good reason not to use it.
That's right, um, along the lines of what, even if the air study comes back as safe enough to breathe, but it still stinks, what could be done to make? Could fans be put in?
I think we need to, either fans humidify, I, I think it definitely.
Dehumidifier.
Could, uh, be humidified.
You gotta have a big dehumidifier.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, there, there should be a, a dehumidifier in there now.
Right.
There could be a dehumidifier.
Yeah, so you get to the fall, and then the falls.
Running that building out, so that you don't get any more mold problems, that's, that's.
Even if there wasn't a water leakage problem in this weather with that.
There wasn't, right.
There's gonna, yeah, there's gonna be, even if there wasn't.
And we had, there were fires running up in there for months and months and months, and, you know, right now, so.
But then you open the bay door, just.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the problem, is you open the bay door to get the ambulance out, back to a one. So. So, the, the last time, it only took us a couple of weeks to get that, the air study done, um.
Okay.
So, yeah. Those, you, you made studies like asbestos, that pretty quick.
Yeah.
Next day, you're gonna have.
Yep.
I'm blocking it right now.
Alright, so, air study, we gotta think of how, how to dehumidify that regardless, that has to be part of the, part of the.
Turn the heat on. Yeah, try and boil it up.
Yeah, so, during the cold weather, probably won't be as much of a problem.
Yeah, you have touch of air, you need.
And then, and then maybe think about, I don't know, you know, you have all the studs sitting there. And all hold the moisture, clean the studs out.
Get, get the wood out of there, get anything.
Get out wood out, anything that retains moisture. If you're not, you're not gonna use it anyway.
No.
Good point, yeah.
So anything that's retaining moisture should be gotten, is that possible?
Sure.
Well, anything's possible.
Take a practice change.
They say you're gonna pull it, just chain it before you leave.
That was last night, pulled the tree out of the middle of the room next to the other station.
Okay, so, three bids, I'm gonna talk to board of finance next week, and then, so we, hopefully, by the week after, by the next board of finance meeting. I will have a, a reasonable, uh, public presentation to put forward. Uh, and I'll work with everybody on proper language, historical reference and photos, and actually, maybe I could practice at one of these meetings to make sure it makes sense, so. That'd be good, alright, cool, um. And we already kinda covered everything else, both first notice of the monies to the BOS, the press briefing, public reveal, and president speaking, next BO, four five big. I'm gonna turn the floor to Ralph Toulis, and he's gonna talk about, oh, I also, another thing, um. They sent letters, they sent formal requests to Nucio and, and Gordon to get the land. Uh, no, uh, I didn't read the letter, I didn't care, I didn't.
I think Mike and I both made comments back, or?
Yeah, 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 I didn't, I didn't, Pete said it was done, and he liked it, I said, I don't see it, not gonna have anything about it, so, uh.
May I ask one more question before we move on?
Yeah.
About the, is there any discussion with the building official? Or zoning, anything like that, or any other requirements they're gonna want about that building?
Well, I just walked in, the zoning guys walked in the bathroom, it's not.
What, you're talking about the temporary?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think ZBAs would, would, uh, be very easy to maneuver now, right?
And, uh, the building official would just be following code after that, so.
Yeah, I wasn't worried about the building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The zoning. Yeah.
Yeah.
We did measure out a spot on the plot or on the property, that it seems.
Would a bit to work with the.
Okay. We'll need some word of the public works, but.
Alright.
What, maybe I, I think you spaced it out.
Maybe south side, miss, on the south side still?
Yes.
Okay, so we.
Mike, are we gonna be in a big hurt if we try to put that building at the fire station? We're gonna go through ZBA?
What building and which?
Temporary.
Temporary, basically, basically a home line at four twenty six River Road if we need to for housing the firefighters.
There's already. I mean, there's already one there, no?
Get in the middle.
Well, it's an camper trailer, yes, probably in zoning world, the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't, we didn't, uh, permit what was there, because it's temporary, it was needed for housing, it hasn't fundamentally changed the use of the property. And, so that's how we look at it, and they put it out, cause it was needed.
In order to get all the eyes dotted, teeth crossed, probably go to ZBA, ask for a special exception to put a dwelling unit there for three to five years.
Well, so, I don't, so the way I looked at it before is it's not a dwelling unit, because no one's dwelling there. They're, they're doing the same thing they're doing in the building now, it's just doing it in a different place, I really like. Well, it's more complicated if you call it a dwelling unit, because then we have to.
Yeah, there are two primary uses and.
That's right, it isn't a dwelling unit, it's a dormitory, that's, right, yeah, okay, there were times, so thank you.
Yeah, they're not, so I wouldn't see it being any different, we would wanna make sure it was located in an appropriate place, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, it's not gonna be there forever, and.
I don't know, answer your question, Alex, it'd be a problem with the building.
We told, we told.
The zoning thing. Yeah, thank you, Mike.
No worries.
Alright, moving on now.
Tools, please. We, we got a hundred feet of that pipe mapped on the surface.
Okay. Can it be seen, is it, did you, no, no.
Oh, I, I.
They're marking well on the surface, so any of us can go down and see.
Documented well.
It's not gonna get missed, Alex could confirm that.
Uh huh, cool.
Um. Yeah, thanks to Admiral Seppic.
Okay.
We took his transmitter, taped it to my robot. Sent it in a hundred feet, yeah, so every twenty five feet, we got an orange mark on the ground, and it ends about in the middle of the trash.
That's what I figured where your hundred feet would end, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
What did you come to, you ran out of?
Ran out of tape, measured to pull it back if I had to.
Okay.
Cause I got stuck a couple times.
So, yeah, that, I have a, I have a three fifty, I think in my Suburban, but that doesn't help you now, cause you already did it.
Well, I, we've got the, the.
Trajectory.
On the surface now.
We just gotta find the catch basin.
So, what I would do is. Okay, go, 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 go thirty feet from that hundred foot mark. And.
That's crazy, there's gotta be a photo somewhere.
I have looked through everything that I can find.
Did you look through those photo albums that I brought you? I was wondering if the car washes, if you could see where the catch basin.
No, we're doing the car washes.
The pictures are in front of the bays, not.
Oh, I got it, yeah.
Wonder if some of the old aerials might show it.
Oh.
Where we got.
Yukon Magic.
Yukon Magic, yeah. Yukon has all the aerials through the whole state, all the way back to like nineteen thirty eight or something.
Or in some cases, yeah, pretty points.
How do you locate those, or where do you?
You go, you Google search Yukon Magic Map Database or something like that, it'll take you to it, yeah.
Yeah, um. I can't believe I didn't think of that.
Yeah, right, I'll tell you that again.
And Troy said he was still, I don't think, you didn't, I don't think you had anything to, to stop his efforts.
No.
Troy said he was gonna contact Potnum.
Potnum has.
Water company.
Their, their water pollution control authority has got this new piece of equipment.
Yeah, right.
For pipeline inspections, um, the, the, they don't know how to use it yet, because it's brand new. So they're still exploring.
So this is a great, this is a great opportunity for them.
For training for that.
Yes, right.
So it's still possible that they, they may come down and go a little farther, otherwise, we can just dig a couple holes and see what we find. Um, we've got the alignment, we can, we can extend that.
But whatever we're gonna do, uh, Troy seems on board, that he's, he's, he's in our corner.
But. If we do that, if we find the end of it. And this just came to mind tonight, is why not French? The bottom of the hill. Behind the firehouse, and let's see how much groundwater we're actually dealing with there.
Yeah, do a linear test pattern.
Yeah. About the length of the firehouse connecting to the end of the pipe.
Wait, I'm not following.
No, I'm serious. If you open that up, you pitch it to the pipe, basically, if you open the ground, you're gonna, you're gonna drop the water down some there, you drain it.
Right.
If we can keep it drained. My, my goal is to see how much, the volume of water that's coming out of the bottom of that hill that we don't see now, because it's all underground. And this would help identify that. But still, if you dig, oh, there's two, right, if you put it in, you get it with the water to drain it to all, can always pump that too. And keep the water level down, I mean, but his weight is the water, the ground there. I think we could work with Troy and, and do some exploratory. Well, but yeah, if you just put it in your drainage, and it will open it up and it will run, it won't be building up into the firehouse. Correct. So it relieve it. Be a hazard, depending on how deep it is, but. Well, but, but really, you probably don't have to go that deep, if it's right there, where you hit the surface, if it can run off. I don't know what, how deep that, um, we didn't really pay attention to depth on a pipe. I don't know what, how deep that, we didn't really pay attention to depth on the pipe when we were tracing it. I think at one point, it was down nine feet from the surface. But we didn't really chase that. And then I did, I did a sketch for Peter to work with Tammy and Jeff Gordon. Maybe see this.
I saw you passing it around. Well, they're they're meeting tonight, I heard, right?
But this is the site, this is the highway line, attacking line as it currently exists.
Okay.
So we gotta pick up perhaps an acre.
Yeah.
And if we were to realign, um, trash, as this sketch suggests.
Well, that's your personal warrant, will they direct to be wrapped trash?
It leaves a lot of possibilities for that site without worrying about whether or not we're gonna be zoning restrictions for a new building or whatever. But who knows how long it's gonna take the state to make a decision?
Right, that could be a while.
Yeah.
But regardless, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt anything, it wouldn't, it wouldn't. If they did just give it to 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 the town, it wouldn't hinder our efforts at all, so. But that's still.
Well, if they don't, it's gonna create issues.
Well, yeah. Alright.
Cause there isn't much we can do other than. I think we barely have the setback, twenty hour setback on the building as it sits.
Um, alright. What's the next step on the call, should we, should I ask Troy to start digging?
Let me get a call tomorrow.
I'm trying to look at aerials, I'm hoping to get an aerial right now over here, I'm on the Yukon Magic seven.
Okay. Sorry, they all, they all, all the works, they don't.
Yeah, they do the five, they work, they work five days, I thought they did. Alright, I thought it's summer out, just wanted to do one to three Thursday.
Yeah.
Well, that's right, they do, they do, we just stop ourselves.
It's like still forty, but it's just four times.
Well, it's not tomorrow, yeah. Change that much. So, yeah, we can talk to them and I know Peter's on board with them because they find Peter. Troy had a face to face upstairs, so I don't think there's any, a little bit of conflict there, so. Alright, so that's that, so. If you talk to him, you'll talk to him then about the. Testing you wanna do in the back of the.
Well.
And you don't have any problem with that, there's no issues?
We just gotta be careful, there's the power line going up the hill to the south tower.
Okay. Yeah, oh, you can see it.
Oh, you can see it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's only underground that much.
Okay.
So that's not a four one one call, you know, or.
Yeah, call him anyway, it don't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, before he digs anything, he's always.
So, will Troy call or?
Yep.
Yeah.
Remind him to call.
I I had to do that when I put the for sale sign on the road balcony.
Really?
Just cause I ended up with three posts in the ground. And I've known the property since forever. And I know there's nothing here, but. It's the law.
But there's other.
It's all the circumstances. Other than that.
Other than that.
I don't think I have anything new.
Okay, are there any questions about that, so we can move forward on. Getting Troy involved and just see what we can do to change that water table. And maybe that will help some of the issues, you're gonna move forward on the. On the air test.
Yeah.
And. Who does the air test?
Um, we use Service Master by May.
Okay.
They're really. Most most cleanup companies like Service Pro or Service Masters or something like that.
Would they have any insight on ways to reduce? The humidity levels of the.
Well, they have a lot of ways, but it costs a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, do they have any ways? Already discussed?
No.
Give a couple of pants dapper in my.
Big cans then. Okay, I I don't know what the cost of the larger D V R fires are.
They rent them by, I think, the day or the week, so they'd be more than happy to rent them.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, but are there any simple solutions like those floor drying fans? I mean, cut all the side of the building at this point, what difference is it to pay for it? But. Put a screen over it, I'm doing, I'm just throwing something out there to.
Yeah.
To manage it for the.
The ceiling fans are all running.
Okay.
Um, we really don't leave the windows open just because of. The people walking by.
Right.
But.
Um, window air conditioners, none, none of that's gonna help. But it's it's more than what's happening right now.
You could probably.
Portable air conditioner in there.
It's still more than what's happening now.
So get Ray Rayhanger ductless splits.
I'm gonna talk about that after. Don't worry about that, it's all fine, it's all.
So, Mister, Mister Chairman, um, just. I know the casual conversation is valuable, but could you tell us where we are on the actual agenda?
Well, where we are on the actual agenda is we're all done with the business, the two things we're. Was three bits for A D U, we talked about that, or two bits, uh, we talked about update on cover inspections. And we talked about that, I, or I covered the. Monies to the B O S, uh, press release and President speaking next for water finance. Old business was just, uh, we're still. Let's say it's an ongoing. Analysis of the stations and. Um. With maybe they focus on the A D U. Or maybe stop calling it that because dwelling has a negative context in this regard, and that's it.
Temporary.
The quarters. Temporary quarters.
Temporary through quarters.
Temporary quarters, I like that.
And you already.
There we go.
It worked well.
Yeah. So that's where we are. And we don't have any, I didn't have any correspondence that was relevant. And there's nobody present to speak because. I didn't lie in that, so then. Next meeting is twenty five July, action items were, include the meeting ID and password in a different way, we'll talk to Shannon about that. For the air study and dehumidification. And, uh, with that. Drainage at thirteen.
Mike, did you find anything there? Seventy's vintage Matt White or something.
Still, so I looked at eighty six and ninety and it's not clear enough when you zoom in, it's just pixelated.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Um, but let's go, let's go back here, uh. To. We had some action items from the last meeting. I think. Couple different people, we were, Alex and I were pursuing more prices, we were going to be contacting. Uh, you were gonna get the information from Mike Tomato for them to do, have their, um. Have his, uh, G I S person try to do the data extrapolation. So we can talk about that at this meeting instead of hiring the thirty thousand dollar outside vendor. Did that?
Yeah, all I did was. Talk to the Board of Selectmen about, were they, were they okay with that, but I haven't got.
So we were gonna have, we were, we were gonna have information for this meeting to know what they could do and.
Oh, but I did not do that. All I did was find out if they were okay spending the money, that's the part I got.
Gotcha.
But Mike, were you saying last time, that was my question, was. For like any like ramps or something else you were mentioning? That it's a requirement to have a location study?
The architects that we talked to and the people from the, um, and I think maybe it might have been Ralph that echoed this also. That part of the process to get either shovel ready funds or, um. Bond, um, state bond commission.
Right.
Money was you were going to have to have an official, um. Location, some kind of location study.
That.
You were gonna have to justify where you were spending the money, I don't remember what the exact kind of analogy was.
Would this pick that requirement or no?
Well, I, I think. From what it sounded like, it was gonna do a lot of the work that we're, because it was gonna do the data side of it of saying. Okay, here's our historical information, we can now plot our historical information on the map and see. Where the intensity is, what's the distance to that intensity or whatever, so that was like. Two thirds of the work that the. Study people would do in the proposals that we were talking about, the consultants. Difference being the other third is where their knowledge of the fire service would be interjected into as far as. How do we interpret this data further, what does it mean for the future, what are the trends of the fire service, you know, all that stuff.
Right.
Subject matter specific to fire service. But it sounded like Mike's people could do the initial data analysis part and create results from the data.
I thought you had mentioned when you were initially like talking, teaching us or telling about the location studies that it was kind of a set price. And that, like, if even if we do this pre-work. And presented to this location study consultancy, is the price still gonna be the same, because like.
Well, and I think we would.
This is how much we charge.
You would fall out of that standard formula and we would have to put out an R S P and say, are you willing to use the data we have already? And just do the last third of the project, which is. Analyze our data and present the fire service related information. I don't know, we could call, those companies are happy to talk to you, we can call.
It might be worth, I mean, like.
If they're willing to use that data and just do that second portion of it.
It seems like that might, I don't know.
Cause it might be a way to save us a lot of money, but if you're.
If you're spending money twice then.
If your concern is they're gonna say, no, we have to do our own data interpretation, so we still want the thirty thousand dollars.
We'll take the data, but we're still gonna try for the same price that we charged, like with the money to do this. Hank, it's separately.
Would the first study be sufficient enough?
Right.
He thinks probably not.
Well, the good news was it was only gonna cost us a thousand dollars, my thought, right?
Right. I think what I'll do is, I I just broke myself, instead of, instead of talking to Mike Tomato, I think I'll call his company. And go through his company.
Okay.
And and then, and rather than than try to do it through this to a. Sort of a sub network.
You might just wanna get.
Hello. Hi, can we help you? zoning? Zoning Board of Appeals? I don't think it's here. I don't know where it is.
Mike's ears, or is there a?
Oh, Mike, yeah, uh, zoning board might be upstairs, but.
Why would you?
Shot into that window there, they might. Are you guys gonna be done by seven thirty? Or should be? I don't know, we have a lot to talk about.
I know you've got.
I mean, I, to me, I was, I I think.
I think we can be done by seven thirty.
I think we can be done by seven thirty. I'm gonna be done by seven thirty. Hang around, I think you filed our annual meeting calendar before you guys brought in. You didn't exist.
But I think, I think we weren't concerned at all about that. I think we did not even know that until this moment.
That's right, we, this is their fourth time meeting.
C B A needs so rarely.
I know.
Then why would we even think about?
This is a meeting about, uh, we're, we're, we're looking at, uh, uh, the, the firehouse. The emergency services buildings.
Yeah.
And, uh, we're, we're, we're in the team that's good, that's analyzing those needs and.
Decisions.
Yeah, so we're asking you personally for more money at the end of this thing.
Oh, I love local government.
It's all good. That's what you're sitting in. So, alright, yeah, so I'm gonna, I'll actually call, I think, I think he says Tysh, Tysh.
So, if I might suggest you just, um, ask him for a brief description of what it was he was talking about.
Yes.
So they know what, what answer you're looking for.
Yeah.
Cause I think he, he spoke of a specific. Series of thoughts and, um, they might say, what is he talking about?
But is it Tysh just him and one other guy? I think it's a pretty small couple.
For ownership, yes, I think you're right.
Yeah, but. Big staffing as well, without, outside area. Um, that's on me, so.
Just one quick thought, and Mike might be able to fragment on this one. Um, if 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 we float a bond on our own. As a town of Wellington, are we still gonna have to get into? Um. A thirty thousand dollar study? Or is that necessary when you're chasing grant money?
So the way it was explained, when Wellington Hill met with architects and got the initial. Plan that Wellington Hill has currently for twenty five old farms. When interviewing, because they, Wellington Hill put out multiple, put out a scope of work. And got, I think, responses from seven different companies, some only want to do design, some only want to do construction. Someone to do it all as one, someone who design build, there were a variety of responses. Wellington also paid, um. Q A and M, who's been doing work for the town and school building committee and now the school, um. Paid Q A and M to do an initial planning exercise as well. And in all of those conversations, they said if you move forward. And you're seeking bonding from the state or you're seeking grant money. In of the million requirements they have is going to be, the, the early design work has to have a justification. For why you wanna spend the money, where you wanna spend it. And that, so it's a standard part of the design process to do a location study.
Well, when we did the library. We, we got it bonded, it was bonded. We didn't need. But if we got, but we got grant money, we applied for a grant. For the state and they came back and they said they had no money. So that we still went ahead and had, went to design. Because they had certain requirements you have to meet. You know, size wise, projection, all this, and. Then they came back to us after we had the design made and said, oh, we have money available now. So we applied for the money. And I don't know how they did it, but they tweaked it so it worked. And we got the money. So the money came in, but we, now study wise, yeah, probably. To get, I don't know, we didn't have any study done. But we got the grant money from them, it was, whatever was available from the state.
I suppose it depends on who's sitting on those grant boards, you know, you gotta have it.
Well, well, we're not hurting now, like, my neighbor, he's in the health department, the water side, and they say, and they give out money. Also, they call them for a study, they want design bill, they want to see it all before you get to that point, but. If you're looking for grant money, you're probably gonna wanna study, some kind of study, but.
Right, but it's only a thousand dollar.
Yeah, right, I mean, start with that, they say it's not good enough, then you know what you gotta do.
But then you have to, and and maybe see if there's any money available.
Well, and that is, that would be part of the purpose of this committee too, to look at the results of that and say, does this give us enough?
Right.
Of, uh, does this tell us enough information to make decisions based off, or do we need more information? Because in the end, our job is to make reasonable recommendations of the chain.
There's an awful lot of very intelligent firefighters on this committee that could probably interpret that data quite well. Or emergency services staff, not just firefighters. Alright. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed? We've got some actual items, some, there's things, works that are gonna be done, well. Ocean Door germ.
Some, sorry.
All in favor?
I, I'm meeting Jerry.
Seven twenty, thank you.
Still recording.
I used to have some, just.